Good evening and welcome to the November 25th, 2024 City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. So tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel later. Welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. We have a very exciting evening with the new pinning, pinning of firefighters and volunteers, and then also the springing in of our new city attorney. So, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Walton has requested an excused absence. Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Member Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I am here. And we need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Walton.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Christensen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it is unanimously approved. Councilwoman Walton is excused. And tonight, we also have us, joining us is our attorney, Kim Pratt, Madrona Law. She's filling in for our interim city attorney, Lenahan, this evening. So council, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Benson, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. So tonight, we have the appointment this evening of firefighter badge pinning and introduction of new volunteer EMS. And we will have Deputy Chief Brown, please introduce our firefighters and volunteers.
All right. Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Ross, and family, friends, other city employees. So I think this is the first time, I tried to pride out Chief Bailey earlier, but we have six people that we're going to be pinning badges on today, and I don't know that that number has ever been achieved before. So an outstanding number of not only career firefighters, but volunteer EMTs as well. Their loved ones are all standing behind me, so we've got a huge crowd of folks to hear, that are here to support them, to include some of the off-duty volunteer EMTs and our on-duty crew. First, I'd like to introduce, and as your name's called, go ahead and step forward up to the front. The first volunteer fire, or excuse me, EMT that I'd like to introduce is Eliza Davids. Eliza recently moved to Washington and works with her husband Mendel as a living caregiver for three adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Redmond. She's previously worked as an EMT in Israel with Israel's National Rescue Service and branch of the Red Cross. Megan David-Adam, having heard so much about the high standard of EMS and public health here in King County, she's excited to join the Snoqualmie Fire Department, be able to learn and grow in her EMS skills alongside some of the best providers in the nation. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the community and be a part of something special, or the special work that you all do. The next volunteer EMT will be Shannon Oates. Shannon was born and raised here in the Pacific Northwest. She works at a nonprofit organization providing health and wellness resources for the families in King County. She wanted to join the Snoqualmie Fire family to be a part of a dedicated and trustworthy team, and she's proud to serve the community of Snoqualmie Fire Department. Next is Will Sersky. Will is from Mount Baldy, California, and moved to Seattle last year. Will is an engineer at Boeing and began volunteering with Snoqualmie to make a positive impact in his community. He's excited to make a difference in this community and to sharpen his EMS skills with a capable department. And then last and not least, we have Haley West, who is a legacy member. She likes to say that she's the most senior and tenured member of the department, as her father Matt has been a firefighter with us for over 25 years. So Haley grew up in the Fire Department here in Snoqualmie, and now she's here to pay it back to our community. So she currently works as an EMT at AMR responding to 911 calls along Seattle Fire. My background is in Snoqualmie Valley. I grew up here and my dad has been working at Snoqualmie Fire for 25 years. And she's joined by her father, mother, and brother, proud to be officially a part of the Snoqualmie Fire family. Ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to present to you the four newest members of our volunteer If I could have Mendel, Susan, and Matt West come forward to pin on the badges for each of these volunteer EMTs.
Okay.
Almost there. So next, I'd like to bring up Jack Owens. Jack grew up in Snohomish, Washington with his wife Teresa in Portland, Oregon. They have a six-year-old daughter named Casey, and they live in Tacoma. Jack started his career as an explorer in high school with the Snohomish Fire District Four Explorer Post 444. After playing hockey on the East Coast, Jack went to college at Portland Community College. He received his science, fire science degree, and was an intern firefighter in Cornelius, Oregon, before being hired at Boeing Fire. After seven years with Boeing, he transferred to Snoqualmie and is excited to serve this community and looks forward to making fun memories within the city. Pinning his badge tonight is his wife Teresa and daughter Casey.
Damian currently resides in Pasco, Washington with his wife Angie, their 13-year-old son Mason, and nine-year-old daughter Madeline. They enjoy traveling, camping, and going to baseball games. Damian grew up in Sunnyside, Washington, where he was also introduced to the fire service while attending a job fair in high school. He was a volunteer firefighter for Sunnyside Fire Department for 10 years and eventually pursued a full-time position, which he successfully obtained and held a career position for five years. It was an honor to serve my hometown, however, I was ready for a new challenge. Damian joined the Snoqualmie Fire due to the diversity of emergency incidents, the beautiful scenery, and the specialty teams our department offers such as swift water and rope rescue tech. Damian and his family would like to thank the city and Fire Department for this opportunity and allowing them to become part of a new family. Pinning his badge tonight will be a personal friend and his previous captain, Captain Tony Castillo of Sunnyside.
So obviously, you can see, you know, bringing on six new members is huge. Again, I don't think this has ever been accomplished in Snoqualmie Fire's history. It's an amazing feat, not only to bring on two amazing gentlemen to our career service, but to bring on four special people to our volunteer EMS service as well. It just bolsters our numbers, it helps solidify all the great things that we're doing for the city of Snoqualmie, and I couldn't be more proud of these six individuals than I am today. I know they'll go off, do really great things for our city, for themselves, they're in it to better themselves, as well as the city. So again, I'm really honored and proud and couldn't be happier to be here with them tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. We're very excited to have the new volunteers, our new career firefighters. So thank you for joining our department. Right. So we move on. So we do have a busy agenda tonight, so you're welcome to stay, or you can, or you can...
Everybody.
Not hurt her feelings, leave.
I think we're going to take it off because Brian's got questions with the word. So you get your wish.
I didn't want that.
Like I said, I have no problem.
We emptied the gallery.
Thanks for coming all the way out here, Captain.
Okay, next item is AB 24-123, city attorney appointment and oath of office. So I'm asking for council confirmation for Deana Burke as the city attorney. Deana is a graduate of Gonzaga School of Law and brings 10 years' experience to the city. Her experience includes serving as a prosecuting attorney's office, Washington State Court of Appeals, United States JAG office, and most recently at the city of Bonny Lake. She brings knowledge, leadership, and enthusiasm to this role. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and Councilwoman Christensen were both part of the interview team. Council may have a motion to confirm Deana Burke as city attorney.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, second by Councilwoman Christensen. Is there any discussion?
Welcome aboard.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous, we have a new city attorney. Very excited to have you join us. Oh, first of all, we will do the oath, and then if you'd like to say a couple words.
We should all remember that Rob did not vote for her.
Hi, Deana Burke. Having been duly appointed by the mayor and confirmed as the city of Snoqualmie, some city attorney, to the office of city attorney.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my own.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform as prescribed by law to the best of my ability. And that I will support and enforce the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
And the law of America. Sure. So, I'm not sure. I just like to thank everyone for being so, for being to me. Snoqualmie is an amazing place, it's beautiful. You know, the staff here are amazing that I got to meet during my interview. The elected officials have been amazing. I'm really looking forward to helping Snoqualmie. Every city is facing, you know, legal issues, it's part of just being a municipality. I'm looking forward to helping the city navigate those issues, and I'm looking forward to being a part of the team. Thank you very much. Excellent, thank you.
Oh yes, photo. You want a photo? We said photo.
on the agenda. There will not be any online public comments. Written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person, mail, or email to cityclerk@snqualmiewad.gov. Before I read in the ground rules, is there anyone in council chambers that would like to have public comment? So please raise your hand.
Seeing none, our public comment is now closed. Moving on to consent agenda. Consent agenda contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated October 28th, 2024, approved the claims report dated November 25th, 2024, AB 24-125, interlocal agreement renewal with Issaquah Jail, AB 24-119, adoption of the 2024 to 2029 King County Flood Management Plan, and city of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So, first, a motion by Councilwoman Johnson and second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion, or is there any public comment regarding this? Seeing none? Any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
I would like to take agenda bill 24-119 off consent and have it discussed separately after consent.
Okay. Anything?
Second.
Yeah, I don't think you need a second, I think we just...
Oh yeah, we don't have to second that.
Councilwoman Johnson?
I take back my second. You're on your own, Holloway.
Just wondering, it sounded like what Mayor Pro Tim wanted to do is have the discussion immediately after consent rather than waiting.
That's our rules and procedures, once you take it off consent.
That is how it's done.
Okay.
Items removed from consent shall be added to the meeting agenda order of business immediately following the consent agenda. Okay, so we remove AB 24-119. Any other discussion? Okay, so we'll be approving the top three items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And consent agenda passes with AB 24-119 removed. So let's move on to the adoption of 2024-2029 King County Flood Management Plan and city of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation. And we will need... We'll have Councilwoman Washington, would you please read in the summary and motion?
Introduction, this is a resolution of the city council which would authorize the adoption of the King County Flood Management Plan 2024, 2029, and the city of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annex. Close action, move to adopt resolution 1700 for the 2024-2029 King County Flood Management Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. For the adoption of the Flood Control Management Plan. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, do you want to specifically explain why you removed it?
I think some wordage here has got me crosswise, which put a new wording, a new terminology of jurisdictional annexation, which is not defined in the agenda bill. So what is it, what does it mean, and why did we pick those words?
We'll ask our community development director, Emily Artetia.
Same question I had in committee.
Do you want to take a...
No, please.
So yeah, those are really good questions. What does it mean? It means that there's a carve-out in the document just to address the city of Snoqualmie. We are one of the very few cities that has such a high risk of flooding, that we actually have our own jurisdictional annexation in this document. So it's a FEMA-related terminology. So we didn't choose that wording, that's the wording that FEMA chooses, and that's the wording that got placed on the document from King County. So it has absolutely nothing to do with an annexation of property into the city, it's an incorporated part of the document for our city. So we get our flood mitigation addressed in the county's plan, in their flood management plan.
It's just when we, when somebody comes up with new terms, they need to be defined in the document.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Is there actually that information? I didn't find it in the document as far as this carving out of the King County, excuse me, of Snoqualmie's mentioning specifically? Is that on another document?
It's in bet, Snoqualmie's management of its flooding is inside this management plan. Like, we negotiated with the county to get this little carve-out, and that's why they call it a jurisdictional annexation.
Oh, so it, pardon me, it's not specifically going to mention Snoqualmie by name?
Oh, if you search the document, it's gonna, Snoqualmie's gonna pop up a number of different times.
Okay.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Just so that I can make sure that I understand, so you're saying that the carve-out for Snoqualmie is located in County Flood Management Plan, which was the one that was sent out by email, that's the 500-page document?
Right, right.
Any other questions?
Well, and the...
Holloway, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, the description of what it is and the words that are used are not coherent. Annexation means you're assuming something. This is, I'm actually carving out a section specifically for Snoqualmie, it's different than an annexation. Okay? So I may be getting picky on English. I really ask that we go back and make sure that that's the proper term for the next time this comes around, because it, the term conflict...
Yeah.
Is significant in my head.
It, just technically from, you know, a FEMA definition, a jurisdictional annexation flood management plan refers to a document that is part of a larger flood management plan specifically tailored to a unique flood risks and mitigation strategies of a particular local government area or jurisdiction, often including the details on local regulation, flood planes, and specific project proposals within that area. I believe we are the only jurisdictional annexation in the King County Flood Management Plan. And we did this same adoption about four years ago for the document that just expired. So it is a repeat of a document that you adopted before the expiration of the previous document.
Councilwoman Benson?
There are other towns that flood, you know, I'm thinking like a little further down the river, you know, Carnation, place like that where they get flooding. So why don't they have...
They might have done their own flood mitigation plan outside of the county.
Councilwoman Johnson?
This might be, this is King County, right? This might be in Snohomish. Okay.
Not Fall City.
Falls City is not a city.
It's true.
So then, I guess, I just wonder if any of our legal people are familiar with the use of the term annexation in this context, or is this just like the only time it's ever been used this way?
I don't know if it's the only time it has ever been used this way. It is certainly a unique way of using it, hearing Ms. Artetia, you know, read the definition for us, I think it gives it some context. Certainly just reading it in the title of your AB is, you know, hard to understand how normally we refer to jurisdiction fits, but reading the definition certainly does.
And then one follow-up. Then what we are adopting is the 2024 to 2029 King County Flood Management Plan and the city of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation. So the city of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation, it sounds like by saying the "and" that is technically a separate document of some sort than the 2024-2029 King County Flood Management Plan. Is that correct?
No, it's just one document.
In which case, would it be harmful, or would it matter if we just struck from the title of the motion, the "and the city of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation"?
Well, we get, we get credit through our, our community rating system and FEMA for this adoption and being acknowledged that we specifically have a built-in part of our flood management is built into this document. So I would, I would hesitate to say just to wipe it, but we get, we get credit points for doing this adoption, we get credit points for having our mitigation embedded in the management plan.
So FEMA knows what this means, and it matters that FEMA knows what that means. All right, thank you. I'm satisfied.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of this, of the King County Management Plan and city of Snoqualmie jurisdiction annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous, and the plan passes. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Director.
The first ordinance of this evening is AB 24-105, certifying an increase in property taxes. This is the second reading of ordinance 1299. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
City of Snoqualmie requires a regular living in the amount of $8,813,555, which includes a 0.89% increase in property tax revenue in the amount of $7604 from the previous year in order to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of the city of Snoqualmie. Move to adopt ordinance 1299 certifying an increase in the regular property tax revenue for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2025, on all property, both real and personal in the city of Snoqualmie, which is subject to the taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient, paying sufficient revenue to carry on the department apartments of the city for the ensuing year and providing for severability and an effective date. May I have a second to all that?
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilwoman Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none? We do have our budget manager, Jana Walker, to answer any questions. Council, do you have any questions or any discussion? Did you have any comments?
I just wanted to point out that there is a scrivener's error that our council found. It's in Section 1 of this ordinance. It refers to the year 2024, that should actually be 2025, and that will be fixed. That's a simple error that our city clerk can fix. And then just as a final word in favor of this bill, I wanted to mention that this 1% increase is built in. It's one of the built-in assumptions in our budget that we passed in October. And it also is, it's really critical, as we've experienced at highs since the COVID pandemic, 8.95% increases in the CPI. So we've been experiencing a lot of increases in costs, and we're limited to this 1%. So it is, it's an important part of our city planning.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
The error you're talking about is in Section 1, increase in regular property tax revenue?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we just change that tonight through motion?
You could. It also provides that the clerk can correct Scrivener's errors, but council could do that with an amendment.
Okay, that was just.
We'll let our city clerk take care of it.
I don't feel the need to. I'm unfamiliar with Scrivener's error. We seldom use it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilor Cotton?
I know we've gotten some emails from concerned citizens regarding, you know, raising taxes. Property taxes is always a concern as far as within the county and such. And I just want to reiterate to those that might be listening out there that we do are complying with the cap of less than 1.1% or of a tax increase that has been budgeted for. And so it's not something we take lightly and definitely want people to reach out to us if there's concerns because there, there are things that the, the city can offer to help with, with these types of things as far as places to go, websites to go to, and also within the county, the city, and other jurisdictions. So we're here to help.
And then on, on the property tax side, I think you can actually apply for a reduced rate as well.
Exemptions, yep, yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Well, and due to the vaguenesses of Washington, people need to be aware, this doesn't actually raise the tax rate. This raises the amount of funds that are brought to the city through real estate tax. Tax rate is then figured out in another math class. And that's just a 0.89% increase. It's nowhere near keeping up with inflation, where your sales tax is a flat rate and will keep up with inflation as things go on. So this in some ways could actually be looked at as a declining tax. People need to be aware about when we have, when we have conversations with them that this is kind of a weird, weird tax. It sounds like an increase, but it's just an increase to the total funds collected, but not an increase to the actual rate per se, because that will get calculated out based on their house value and everything else.
I think last time during the presentation, we noted that the city receives only 18 cents on the dollar of every property tax you pay. So it's, it's a small amount that we receive. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the certifying increase in property tax, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And it passes unanimously in certifying an increase in property tax. The next item is AB 24-106, 2025 Property Tax Levy. This is the second reading of ordinance 1298. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
City Snoqualmie requires a 2025 regular levy in the amount of $8,813,555,000, which includes a max 1% increase in property tax revenue from the previous year, amounts resulting from the addition of new construction improvement in properties, increases in the value of state assessed amounts authorized by law as a result of any annexations and refunds made by King County. Property tax revenues are required in order to cover the expected expenditures and obligations of the City of Snoqualmie. Move to adopt ordinance 1298, levying regular property taxes for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2025 on all property real and/or personal in the City of Snoqualmie, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of providing sufficient revenue to cover departmental operations of the city in the ensuing year and providing for severability and an effective date. May I have a second?
Second.
Removed by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Washington for AB 24-106, 2025 Property Tax Levy. Is there any public comment regarding that item? Seeing none, councilor, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Since unanimous and we have approved the 2025 Property Tax Levy. Moving on is next ordinance, AB 24-107, the 2023-2024 Biennial Budget Amendment. This is the first reading of ordinance 1300. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction?
This ordinance is to amend the 2023-2024 biennial budget to provide the city with the appropriations necessary to account for the 2024 Snoqualmie Police Association Collective Bargain Agreement, the closure of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund Number 150, the remittance of school impact fees to Snoqualmie Valley School District, three projects with Utility Capital Fund 417, and various other expenditures throughout the city.
Second. Oh, first reading, first reading.
Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, councilor, do we have any questions regarding this item? We do have our budget manager, Jenna Walker, who's present to answer any questions.
Good evening, council. This is the fifth budget amendment for the biennium and it includes 12 separate budgetary requests, which represents an additional appropriation of $3,387,500. This is supported by an estimated $487,109 of revenue, various kinds of revenue, including recoveries, interest, and then there's a small grant in there as well. One important thing to note for this budget amendment is that it will require a super majority of council approving it because we're reducing appropriation in one classification. And I'm going to run through each request. Our first request for $153,000 relates to the Snoqualmie Police Association CBA. This was finalized in 2024 and we estimate that it will require an additional $153,000. 70,500 of that relates to the North Bend Police Services Fund. We're currently in negotiations with them. Technically, this should be supported by revenue from them, although that's certainly not guaranteed. The second request is the North Bend Police Services expenditures and a wellness grant. Now, while these expenditures relate to the North Bend Police Services, they actually will be, the appropriation relates to the Snoqualmie Police Department. We are estimating that over time will exceed the contractual value of the North Bend Services contract by about $250,000. So we would be moving that appropriation, those expenditures into the Snoqualmie Police Department. The remainder of that, which is about $22,000, relates to a wellness grant and that grant is expected to be received during 2025. And it's a, it rounds up to $22,000. The third request is parks expenditures and there, there's a small grab bag of items that are, we need to increase the appropriation for, one of which is there's been an upswing of vandalism in our parks that has cost the city about $25,000, occurring mostly in the later half of 2024. Additionally, there were some parks electricity upgrades for holiday lighting and this does not include actual holiday lights. This was actually the, the infrastructure that we, you don't really see improving those electrical, the electrical abilities of railroad park. That is approximately $44,000. Then we have some historical invoices that were paid in the current biennium totaling $14,000. Those related to turf repair and they're from 2021, 2022, and they were paid in the current biennium. And then finally, we have some upgrades and repairs related to park structures, which includes about $10,000 and this totals $93,500. Also for parks expenditures, there is the potential that we would be requesting a motion to adjust this. We just had a proclamation of emergency related to a winter storm and whenever the appropriation is closer than we'd like to the actual expenditures, then we could be requesting, we could be amending this amount to include for emergency expenditures. And we're hopeful that by the second reading, we will have a better estimate of whether that's necessary and what the amount would be. So stay tuned on that. The fourth request is the decrease in appropriation that I mentioned. We would be decreasing the community development appropriation by $498,000. And this is basically so that the impact on the general fund is, it balances out. The requests that we're having will balance with this decrease in appropriation so that general fund won't really have any impacts because of this amendment. Number five, oh.
Councilor Washington?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the decrease in appropriations from community development, is that just a reduction in headcount?
In large part it is, yes. We've also had a few other, there were some developments that didn't happen, so we've had some decreased expenditures in there, there as well.
Okay, thank you.
It's a monetary annexation.
Number five, we budgeted for some transfers to the ERP Project Fund in a different amendment and those mistakenly were taken out of the non-departmental fund instead of the administration classification. So we're requesting $50,000 for that classification to make up for that transfer that occurred during 2023. So it can't be reversed as it's part of our finalized numbers for 2023. Number six is school impact fees. These fees are when, when building occurs, we collect a certain amount of revenue. It's called revenue, even though we remit it directly to the school department, school district. So whenever we receive those funds, we have to appropriate for them so that we can transfer them on where they belong. And this, this amount is greater than what we received, but we've asked for a little bit extra because any revenue that we will see, we, we will receive will go directly to the school district.
Councilor Benson?
I'm sorry, can you back up one, the transfers to the ERP Project Fund?
I don't think I understood what, so we took $50,000 from, from, we mistakenly took it from the wrong fund, but that money went somewhere, right? I mean, that money didn't disappear.
No, it didn't disappear. It landed in the ERP Project Fund and it came out of the general fund. So the effect on the general fund is zero. It should have come out of one classification, the administration, but it came out of the non-departmental. So it came from the general fund and it went to the ERP fund. That was appropriate. It's just the classifications within the general fund.
Is this going to cost us $50,000 though?
No.
Because it looks like it costs us $50,000.
Well, we are, it's a transfer staying within the city that already occurred in 2023. However, we have a certain level of appropriation within the non-departmental fund and because this $50,000 came out of the non-departmental rather than administration, our balance is a little bit off, but the money came from the same fund that it was intended to and it's going to the same fund that it's intended to. And it won't have an effect, this because we're decreasing appropriation one place and increasing it in another, the net effect to the general fund is zero.
So is my understanding. Thank you, thank you. You guys get it, right? Okay, all right, all right.
Okay. Now we're on ARPA Fund Closure, number seven. This, ARPA dollars are required to be obligated by the end of 2024. So this essentially, if there's any remaining amounts due to interest, we will make sure that we have enough money there to transfer all of that to the general fund. So we don't expect that to be the two, full $200,000 that it's intended to be, but if we don't transfer that full amount, whatever is remaining, then we run into some penalties related to the grant. So we just want to make sure that we're doing above and beyond. That fund will close at the end of 2024 and all of the funds will be within the general fund.
Number eight, we have stormwater remediation recoveries and storm pond cleanup. The remediation recoveries occur whenever there is a spill into our drainage system. Our, we're required to clean that up. We clean it up and then we bill the appropriate parties who are responsible for that. So that amount accounts for about $32,000 where we've received, I believe most of that. We're expecting to receive all of that, but we wanted to increase the appropriation for those unexpected expenditures. And then secondly, $63,000 for storm, storm pond remediation. That was mentioned during the budget. Some of that is happening during 2024, so a little bit ahead of schedule. And the total for stormwater increasing appropriation is $95,000. Next, we have Waste Reclamation Facility Phase Three. This amendment was addressed in AB 24-76, which estimated that a portion of the prospect contract would occur during 2025. We are ahead of schedule and we think that it'll all occur in 2024 at this point. So we're appropriating for that amount in case it does go according to the new schedule. And the total for that is 1.7 million dollars, $1,728,000.
Councilor Johnson?
Going back to the ARPA fund, you said that the funds would be transferred to the general fund, which is a very big bucket with a bunch of little subclassifications and things. Do we need to denote which parts of that 200,000 are going to what? Or if you dump it all into police, then isn't it going to be like, well, actually we need to spread some of that to community development and now we need to do another amendment to appropriate this much of the 200,000 to that department, et cetera, et cetera?
The revenues in the general fund are essentially revenues for the general fund. We don't assign them buckets. It just all comes in at once and if they were restricted, we would keep them in a separate fund. So this was part of the 2023-24 budget that we would move all of this, the ARPA dollars into the general fund. So it's not really changing any of the appropriations. It's not really changing our expectations. We're just making doubly sure that all the money that we planned on transferring out, we can transfer out.
I guess, sorry, follow up.
Yes.
So I guess what those funds ultimately go to in the general fund, we do not also need to designate?
We're not tying incoming dollars to outgoing dollars. We do in some cases, like if there is ambulance revenues, we're going to tag that as something going to the fire department EMS. But the majority of the revenues that come in, including ARPA, they're not tied to a specific use. And so we don't limit ourselves in that way unless council chooses to.
Thank you.
That brings us down to the Eagle Lake Reclamation Basin. This amendment relates to the design of the Eagle Lake reclaimed water reservoir as described in AB 24-112 and then also the associated purchase of land, which is being presented today, AB 24-124. And the total amount for that is $627,000. And this is based on our current burn rate, what we estimate we will need to spend in the current biennium. This project does extend into the next biennium. Number 11 relates to 384th Avenue Southeast Sidewalk. This amendment is, relates to two agenda bills, AB 2468 and AB 2488. And we are assuming that all of the utility portions of 384th Street Sidewalk will be completed by the first of December, I believe. And so we are appropriating for the remaining portions of that, which totals $487,000. And then finally, we have a vehicle replacement, which is in, within ERNR fund. This is related to a car that was determined unrepairable and it was, let's see, the city purchased this vehicle already, but we're estimating that we need to increase appropriation by $80,000 to recover for it. We also received insurance recoveries in the amount of $80,000. So we're increasing the appropriation, but it doesn't affect the fund balance because the income of 80,000 is equal to the outgoing appropriation of 80,000. And that is our number 12.
Thank you. Councilor, do you have any questions? So this is the first reading. The second reading is scheduled for December 9th at the next council meeting. So if you're looking at it, if you have some questions, maybe reach out to our budget manager, Walker, and she can answer your questions and copy the rest of the council too, because they may have similar questions, so. Ready to move on? Right. Next item, next ordinance is AB 24-096, Transportation Impact Fees. This is the first reading of ordinance 1301. Councilor Washington, would you please read the introduction?
Introduction Snoqualmie Code Title 20.09. Transportation Impact Fees will allow the city to capture a fair proportionate share of the cost of new transportation facilities needed to serve new growth and development within the City of Snoqualmie. Proposed action, first reading is tonight, November 25, 2024. No action required. Public hearing, second reading and proposed adoption, December 17. Public hearing, second reading and proposed adoption, December 9th, 2024. Move to adopt ordinance 1301, amending the Snoqualmie Municipal Code to add Title 20.09, Transportation Impact Fees and Associated Rate Study.
Right. So again, so is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we do have, um, Community Development Director Artetia is here to introduce our transportation planning.
Yes.
Yes, we have our transportation planner, Chris Brayland, from Fares and Peers here to provide a little overview um, on, on the transportation impact fee program, including the rate study.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yeah, I, we actually, uh, I need to make a motion, uh, to, to substitute. Can I go ahead and read that out?
Yes.
Okay. So I propose a motion to substitute for the traffic impact fee program. Agenda Bill 2496 times one, draft code amendments, as there were no minor substantive, or excuse me, no minor non-substantive updates to the draft ordinance. Second.
Bitten by Councilwoman Washington and second by Councilwoman Johnson. And so these were just small errors?
Yeah, there was, um, just a small clarification added to 2009-020 definitions and 2009-040 applicability, um, just referencing the general fund and the currently non-utility capital fund. And other just, um, you know, capitalization period, just small, small.
So does everyone have a copy of that?
I do.
Was there a copy sent out to all council members?
No, there was just the motions to substitute. Happy to, to read again what, what was added.
And what's my best, if we can just give them a copy.
Sure, absolutely.
Take a copy of mine?
Yeah, we could, I could do that. I have a copy here too.
We can have somebody else.
Things that were changed or just a couple of things?
Yeah, it's, in essence, what was changed was, uh, I'll just kind of read them out here. So there's a definition in 20.09.020. And I think the, or my understanding is what was changed is the wording, which is currently the non-utility capital fund. I don't know what that was changed from.
It was just added.
It was just added, okay. So effectively that was added, uh, in that definition section. And the, um, applicability section in 20.09.040, um, the words, "the general fund" was added. So effectively, we're, we're looking at some grammatical corrections, in essence.
Do you need discussion on that? Do you want to vote on substituting? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Since unanimous, and we will substitute it with those minor changes. Okay.
Uh, I would like to turn it over to Chris Brayland, so he could give you an overview on the rate study and the traffic impact fee ordinance.
Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Director. I also want to read, um, if, if it's okay, I just want to share with my, with the council, with my colleagues here, there are some exemptions, uh, present in this agenda bill. So if you just give me a little latitude here, I'll, I'll read them out and, uh, we can have a discussion. So exemptions include, uh, are included in proposed Snoqualmie Municipal Code 20.09.08, A1, including the constructing, reconstructing, or remodeling of any assisted living senior, assisted senior living where medical and services are provided on-site. The city council can agree to include this development as an exemption from transportation impact fees for assisted living. The city will have to backfill 100% the impact fees on such projects with general city funds, i.e. the city would have to use other public funds to pay for the exempted fee amount into the transportation impact fund. The requirement comes from, uh, Washington, um, or excuse me, for RCW 82.02.06. Senior assisted living doesn't fall into the other carve-outs for early learning facilities or low-income housing per the RCW. So we have Director Artetia here and Kim Pratt, as well as, um, I'm so sorry.
Chris Brayland.
Chris Grayland, thank you, Mr. Grayland. I'm sorry.
Brayland.
Brayland, thank you for being here, Mr. Brayland, that can answer questions to the exemptions.
Thank you.
Right, uh, good evening, council members. I'm just gonna give a high-level overview of the impact fee program that we've been working with you all on for, uh, several months here, uh, and answer, answer questions. There's a bunch of technical jargon and mumbo jumbo that we have to go through to make this legally applicable. Um, I'm always happy to talk about those things, but, um, if you don't want to talk about that, that's great too. So, uh, just, uh, at a high level, um, these are new in Snoqualmie transportation impact fees. You have school impact fees, as I surmised from the budget discussion a moment ago. So impact fees as a whole are not new to the city. But they come from the Growth Management Act, which requires you as a city to expand transportation infrastructure concurrent with new development. And when the legislature said you have to go do stuff and build things, they also gave you the authority to help pay for that. At the same time, they're called impact fees. They're a one-time assessment on new growth or any change of use that would increase the amount of trips generated on the roadway or multimodal system. And they're there to explicitly fund new transportation capacity. And they pay for a specifically defined project list. We're not building anything and everything. It has to be on this list. The list has to be, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, capital facility element. So, um, this is a fairly constrained set of projects that we're going to be, uh, looking at funding. And it's also per state law, has to be part of a larger financial strategy. These cannot be the sole means to pay for that entire list of projects. They are a way to leverage other funds. I'll go over the list in just a second here. So the way I like to think about this is that we're looking to leverage funding from private, uh, uh, parties to really help partner to, uh, in, implement a much larger list of projects. So we're looking at about $17 million over 20 years of, uh, impact fees to build close to $100 million of investments. So they're a way to help position the city for grants, to help leverage, uh, other outside funding sources, to bring, uh, dollars to the table. And they're really a way of an accelerator, I think of them as, that we can get projects on the ground faster with these um, because we can use this money to basically pull in funds that would otherwise be more difficult to tap. So we worked with, um, Public Works and Community Development to identify the list of projects, um, that, uh, really facilitate movement by all modes in the city. And, uh, we're really looking to make sure that the cost of these impact fees is balanced. We don't want to have the fee so high that it's an encumbrance to development within the community, but as I'll show in a minute. Uh, we also want to make sure that we're getting a reasonable amount of investment from the private sector compared to our counterpoints here in East King County. Um, so that point is maybe demonstrated by this graph here. When we look at the proposed impact fee rate that's going, that's, it's embedded in the rate study and, uh, would be approved by the ordinance, we're running about where that red arrow is. The numbers, the dollar values differ from what's in the rate study. That has to do with how the math is determined for, um, the unit of analysis. If you want to, I can get into that. Um, but it's the way, the best way to think of this is that for a typical single-family home, this would be the cost to pay the transportation impact fee for branding and building a brand-new home. Um, you can see that we're following, falling there above the Western Washington average, which is down at the bottom of that screen. So there's a whole bunch of communities that are lower than that. Uh, but when you look at some of the peer communities around us, uh, North Bend, Samamish, Issaquah, they're all at the top end of that list, uh, of, uh, impact fees. So we are definitely within the range of what developers are accustomed to seeing here in King County. Uh, and at that end, on the lower end of that scale. So this is not a new thing for most folks, and we're definitely within the range. And that's, again, was working with the city administration, um, and the various departments in the city to help right-size and balance that, that fee, uh, out there. Um, and I had the project list here. I can bring that up. I have the, the rate study, um, available, uh, uh, as well. Um, but wanted to pause there and see if there's any questions, uh, for your consideration.
Is this your roundabout, roundabout way for asking questions?
Yes, exactly.
Sorry, sir, can you bring up the last slide, please?
Yes.
I just wanted to point.
Washington.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Um, I just want to point out that this is inclusive of the, uh, the fee structure that would be implemented. So it still puts us in a very competitive situation.
Councilwoman Benson.
Seventeen million dollars in fees collected for a $98 million return seems like, I mean, that's like, if you were Bernie Madoff and you were telling me that we could get that, I'd, you know, I, I, I wouldn't be surprised to hear it from you, but I, I have a hard time believing it. How certain are we that, uh, we can have that kind of return for those fees raised?
So what the, the way that to look at here, let me, let me bring up one other, bear with me. I'm gonna bring up the project list here, because I think that's probably an easier way to help understand this. My share.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Just real quick, that is, I believe, over 20 years, if I remember correctly.
Yes, correct. Okay, so, forgot. The, um, the project list that we're, um, aiming to fund is this $100 million list of projects. And I will note, and it was brought up in the, uh, Community Development Committee, that there's one project on there, number 11, that's, it's a large number. It's a sort of pretty big proportion of this, and it's a WashDOT project. Will WashDOT replace the SR202 bridge in the next 20 years? I don't know, I cannot say. Um, the bridge is, uh, I believe it's functionally deficient as defined by, uh, the, the state. So it's due for replacement. What this project, the funding would do that we've identified is that it's not to replace the WashDOT element. It's to help to leverage some enhanced multimodal improvements along that bridge. And anybody brings money to WashDOT, they're more eager to fund it than when nobody brings money to WashDOT. So is this a pyramid scheme to get all of that in place? No, I wouldn't say so. But what it does is, um, will, can, can we raise the $17 million? Yes, we can raise the $17 million. Does it help to accelerate many of these projects? Absolutely does that. Will this exact list get built? I doubt it, because you, as the council, get a chance to amend this periodically to say, we have some different priorities, we would like to fund things a little bit differently. Um, as long as you're transparent about it, that is completely expected and legal because, uh, things change, growth patterns shift around the city. But what it does is give you flexibility to help implement this. This is what we best expect at this moment, uh, for, for what you could use to fund this.
Mayor President Tim Holloway.
The city is expecting to contribute $40 million to the, to enhancements to the 202 bridge?
No, so this, the, the rough estimate for replacing that bridge is in that $40 million range. So what we have penciled in is, I forget what the exact number is, a million dollars or something to provide a better facility than what WashDOT would normally build. The, if WashDOT does not build that bridge, then we're not gonna contribute impact fee funding towards that. We would likely shift that to a different project. Uh, but that is on, it's a known project that has caused, uh, has been flagged in the comprehensive plan as something that needs to be addressed to accommodate growth. Uh, and therefore, it's a completely eligible project to expend impact fee dollars on. But what I'm trying to emphasize here is that we're not gonna move forward with it if WashDOT doesn't move forward with it, because they're the, they're the owner of the bridge and they have to contribute the vast majority of the funding.
Councilwoman Johnson.
If there's a follow-up, I'll, I'll hold.
So, yeah, no, uh, guys, the city portion of that would be $1 million, right? Would be the, the additions we would want for transfer, bicycle lane and all that. The $40 million needs to come from the state.
Correct.
They need to have their own impact fees and their own funding to support it. That is a regional resource, not just a Snoqualmie resource. And this, this is impact fees to projects, buildings, citizens within Snoqualmie only. So it's inappropriate to levy a $40 million bill on some portion of that, on them, when the Snoqualmie port bill of that is only a million dollars.
So I guess to clarify, if we don't have this on our project list and WashDOT says we will build a like-in-kind replacement for that bridge with the four-foot sidewalks that are there, that's what they'll build and we will not be able to use impact fee funds to make a higher-quality facility. If we have it on the list.
I, I'm not arguing with the million dollars, which would be the city's portion of that addition. I'm arguing the $40 million is inappropriate for us to put on this list, because we would not fund that $40 million.
No, and that's not implied, um, that you would be funding the $40 million list. What we're trying to show is that there, there is a requirement in state law that says impact fee dollars demonstrably cannot be paying for the entire cost of project.
Right, so you go through, go through some derivation, only 23,000 thereabouts is really what we're looking to cut, recoup for these impact fees. And then you break it down by, uh, DU's, can't remember what DU stands for.
Dwelling.
How much each dwelling, dwelling unit charges, okay? Have no argument with that, that, of that 98,000, it's only 23,000 we're looking to get for this. Again, my argument is that $40 million is state responsibility, not a city responsibility. We shouldn't be charging the citizens for a state responsibility. I already am with the Parkway. Okay, I don't need to do it more. I agree with a million dollars to be targeted on there as a flag to the state going, we don't want to replace just in kind, we want a little bit better, and we're willing to chip in a million dollars to have that little bit better when you get around to it. So, and I've always argued this thing remains on our tip as it goes forward, because this is an important thing for us. It's a major thoroughfare for the city, okay? But it is a regional resource that the citizens of Snoqualmie are not solely responsible for funding that $40 million.
Correct, and the impact fee does not assume that. It's the, for the same reason it's on the tip, it's on our list. At that, the, the funding is not, we're not raising any money for the state.
You're not raising the full 98, but you are taking the 98 and you're, you're dividing that between what you think is, again, what this other funding responsibility is and what you want to fund through these impact fees. Okay, so that, this $40 million comes down through the math.
Mayor. You, not, not really. The, the, it's because that we would like to expend impact fee dollars on what is, on this bridge structure that happens to be a $40 million project, that we need to include the full $40 million in the total project list. Because it's part of, the, the law says, what is the list of projects that you're aiming to fund? Enhanced sidewalk, if we said, let's build a brand-new bridge to the side of that, that's somewhat semantics. We could carve that out and call it something else and remove that. The impact fee would be exactly the same, would be no different.
Uh, no.
I think Councilwoman Johnson has a comment regarding this as well.
Yeah, I think, I know, I, I think that we can make it really simple, unless I'm misunderstanding something. Table five, uh, says calculation of the fee per trip has the 98 million. And then it says, wine two, subtract estimated external funding, 74,800,000. And then the remaining amount is the assumed city investment, which is the 23,184,000. And that, that is the part that's used in the calculation, unless I misunderstood.
That, that's correct.
Yeah, so literally the, almost all the $40 million is not used in the calculation. It's only in the list saying, this is a project that will need to be funded at some point, but that $40 million doesn't go into the calculation of the fee, uh, per trip. but that forty million doesn't go into the calculation of the fee per trip." It's twenty-three million total across all the projects. So look at table five.
Agreed. I just don't know how the twenty-three is calculated.
So the, working with the Public Works Department, we looked at the, again, the list of TIP projects and other projects that have emerged from, say, the comprehensive plan or other studies and said, "Here's the list of projects that we think is reasonable for the city to assume to be built over the next twenty years. Here's how much funding the city is reasonably able to get in place to help see those other projects along." So it was a collaboration with the Community Development Department to identify how much city funding might there be able to be brought to the table and what share of that can we place upon impact fees while keeping the fees affordable. So there's a lot of latitude here. Other cities have much higher impact fees because they will assume that the city investment could be higher. That's a choice of those communities to say that we would rather pay for ten million dollars of that bridge that would be an otherwise state responsibility. That's not, that's your choice as a community to do so. So we kept that, the twenty-three million dollars was looking at, what's the project list? What is reasonable for the city to pay for? And then work with other partners, granting agencies, other regional agencies to get the balance of funding in place. So it's, that number is fungible based on what we think can be afforded. And that was done through a fair bit of collaboration with the various city departments to identify something that, again, at the end of the day, we wanted to make sure that the impact fee was something, since it's brand-new, was, would be able to be absorbed within the community without a lot of duress.
Councilor Johnson?
In table one, there's also another seven million-ish that is attributed to the Soquonmi mill development, which, unless I'm mistaken, I believe that what that is saying is the source would be the mill site project developer people, not the city.
Well, so that's a good clarification. So for the mill site project, there are a number of mitigation items that are not on the mill site itself. So they're not what are called project improvements. They are system improvements that can be used by the city at a larger basis, where it notes that the mill site has an obligation to mitigate those impacts, but the determination of how to mitigate it will be identified at a later date. One means to mitigate project-related impacts is to pay an impact fee. And so if they pay their impact fee, then those projects would be deemed to be mitigated, and the city would be the one that would implement the mitigation. There's a few other wrinkles in there in terms of how it actually gets done. So those were identified through the mill site, but there was never any obligation for the mill site to actually implement them. This helps to remove a point of negotiation and study out so that they can be implemented through the mill site paying an impact fee.
Councilor Christiansen, did you have a comment?
I did bring anything about it more.
Councilor Cotton?
When would these fees, since it is something new, potentially take effect?
I believe the ordinance language has them taking effect in next year, July, or July, January one. So right at the beginning of the year.
Twenty twenty-five, okay. Mayor President Tim Hallway?
Well, and in regard to the mill site, have we run the math? So I assume what you're saying is they can either do the improvements or they can pay the impact fees as defined here. Have we done the math that, again, because this assumes three-quarters are funded elsewhere and only one quarter is funded through this impact fee, have we done the math to determine that if they choose the impact fees, we are actually getting the same amount of money as if they were doing those mitigations themselves?
So as a background, the calculations used to assess the SEPA-based impact and what goes into an impact fee program, we make sure the calculations are run the exact same way. So in essence, they're going to be paying the same amount for their impacts. It's just that through the impact fee program, there's not a separate study and separate negotiation around the findings of those studies to effectively arrive at the same conclusion. So they would pay the same amount either way. It's just it's a lot less sort of burden on staff to get the mitigation in place.
Councilor Christiansen?
With the way the draft ordinance has been presented, section twenty dot oh nine oh eight oh exemptions states, though, that projects that are being done by a developer who's constructing, reconstructing, or remodeling any form of low-income housing within a targeted residential area utilizing multifamily tax exemption would be exempt from having to pay this. And it's my understanding and recollection that we did go ahead and authorize the multifamily tax exemption on the mill site property. So would they still have to be paying these impact fees or not?
For qualifying low-income residential units, they would not have to pay an impact fee. For the bulk of the development, which is not residential, they will have to pay impact fees.
So they're meaning...
So commercial, industrial uses, those all have to pay the prevailing impact fee.
So sorry, so just so that I understand it then, is it unit by unit?
Yes.
Or is the fact that there is the twenty-two percent of low-income housing in the residential portion, does that take the entire residential portion out of having to pay the fees?
No. Every single unit is assessed individually. So if they, for the, I don't know what the details are, but if you're saying if twenty-two percent of the residential units are low-income, twenty-two percent of the units would be exempt from fees. The other seventy-eight percent would have to pay the fee.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, another thing I wanted to clarify was also in terms of how the growth was estimated, especially in terms of the residences, was based on the updated numbers from the powers that determine such things, based on some negotiations from the city and working with the county on some more reasonable estimates of our growth over the next X number of years. Something like seven hundred or something units now instead of fifteen hundred, which is what was originally dictated to us.
That's only half crazy.
Councilor Johnson?
I also wanted to share some skepticism, though, as expressed earlier. Are we really going to get that much? Are we really going to get seventeen million? And, yeah, I certainly have the same feelings. But I also look at that number of a hundred million. And do I really think that we're actually going to spend, including external funding, et cetera, that much? I'm also skeptical of that. So I guess it's an equal amount of skepticism as to what will actually happen over the next twenty years. But if I had to guess, it seems like it's probably going to be somewhere in balance. Like, we'll be as low in terms of the revenue as we are in the expenditure.
They are tied together, certainly. And what a larger list gets you is flexibility to help implement projects that are of the highest priority and place those impact fee dollars in that space. So I agree that, you know, it'd certainly be great if we could leverage all the funding and implement those large project lists. We're setting the mechanics in place to do so. But I'd say more importantly is that we have flexibility to implement what is a project that is a priority, that can leverage these funding, that might otherwise take considerably longer time to get out the door.
Councilor Benson?
Yeah, and the overall concept seems like a theme in the city. For example, with parks, we've had, you know, if you think of our all-inclusive park, the amount of money that we put in to that park was somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty percent of the overall cost of that park. And then that other money came in from county, state, and actually, I don't know the list of everywhere that it came from, but it came from other places. So if you're willing to show that you, you know, that you're dedicated to a project, it's going to attract more interest from those entities, so.
Okay. Any other comments? This is the first reading. We do have a public hearing, and second reading is scheduled for December ninth, the next council member, council meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next final ordinance this evening is AB twenty-four dash zero nine eight, adoption of the comprehensive plan, two thousand and forty-four. This is the first reading of ordinance thirteen oh two. Councilor Washington, would you please read the introduction?
Yes, introduction. City of Soquonmi is required to adopt and update comprehensive plan by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four pursuant to RCW chapter thirty-six point seventy A of the Growth Management Act, which contains the fifteen goals intended to guide the development and contents of comprehensive plans in the state of Washington. Proposed action, approve a second reading and make a motion to adopt the City of Soquonmi Comprehensive Plan, two thousand and forty-four, periodic update, ordinance number thirteen oh two.
Okay, so that was the first reading. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we have our Community Development Director, Artichoke, is present to answer any questions or provide an overview.
I'm happy to answer any questions. I mean, this is a accumulation of a lot of work that started about two and a half years ago when I first joined the city. You can tell in the draft ordinance, the number and volume of meetings that were held and the amount of engagement that occurred and the number of comments that were provided. And I just wanted to congratulate you all into getting this point. It's very exciting. I encourage you to read the document, volume one, and the appendix, volume two. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Councilor Johnson?
So I did note at our F and A committee meeting that it was a little, feeling a little out of order in that typically ordinances and resolutions, et cetera, go through a committee before they come to the full council. So this didn't go through as it currently exists in its current package through community development. That said, we do have another community development meeting next week where it could come back to us. The issue was that if we didn't do it now and do two readings, then we would miss the deadline because we only have two more council meetings.
One more.
One more.
One more after this. I meant, at the time, there were two to go. So this would be the first reading, and then the next one would have to be the second reading, and that's it. So we kind of have to jam through. That said, it's not like we've never seen this before. And this is a brand-new document that is being dumped on us at the last minute. We reviewed all of the various components over the course of several months earlier this year, along with tidbits along the way over the last couple of years as staff was working their way through it and getting tremendous assistance for various parts from the planning commission. So this was a large effort. And while it didn't technically go through committee, I think that, I think we've all put eyeballs on it a few times.
Right. Councilor Cotton?
So I did read through volume one. I should say I kind of skimmed through volume one. This is pretty extensive. But I kind of looked at some things, like going through the elements, and I wanted to know, is this staff kind of did the polishing on this? Or did we have a, you know, one of the outside contractors kind of fine-tuned the wording and things like that? Because I swear, I looked at some sections and I was going, "I don't remember us saying that or that way or, you know, that type of a thing." So, but the finished document is pretty amazing. So I just wanted to know if this is all our staff work because I'm very impressed.
It is all staff council work. I mean, if you want to get into the nitty-gritty, it's the Economic Development Commission, the Planning Commission, the Community Development Committee, the Public Works Committee, the council, the public, the staff. Set of consultants, about five to seven groups individually. We worked with various departments and state agencies. We worked with our community partners, the local Soquonmi tribe. The list goes on and on. Each element probably generated somewhere between fifty and maybe a couple hundred different comments, so.
Great. Councilor Cotton?
The one question I had, which I kind of saw as a repeated theme going through this, was kind of in the environmental side of things, is there was probably a half dozen references to Boris Lake and some of the aquatic recommendations that could be done out there. Now, is this, my understanding is Boris Lake is part of the mill site project or the city-owned warehouse?
No, neither. It's owned by a private company.
Okay, okay.
I thought of both of those.
But, so there was, so I just was wondering where that came from, the, those references to tying it in with, you know, River Trail and all the kind of aquatic things. But there was constant mention of the mitigation of potential contamination being part of that. So I was surprised that it came up so frequently with that caveat of the mitigation of that, you know, the potential contaminants and...
You're right, yeah. I think there was quite a few people in the community that would like and expressed a desire to see more environmental review and cleanup of areas around there, including Boris Lake.
Yeah. I mean, certainly before doing any of the suggestions for the aquatic activities, I would, I'd like to see that because there was, you know, the talk of being able to, you know, canoe there and all these other things. So, yeah, I just was interested where that had come from because I didn't, again, remember seeing that.
Any other comments? Okay, so is this going back to committee or you will just review it at the next council meeting? Councilor Benson?
Yeah, why don't we kick it back to CDC and have them, you know, more eyes on this before we finally pass it? I think the better. And it also gives the public another opportunity to chime in.
Okay. Is there a motion to move back to committee?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor President Tim Hallway, second by Councilor Johnson to move this back to the CD committee, which will happen this next week. And then it will come back to council meeting on December ninth. All in favor, say aye.
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 Impose nay? Right, it goes back to CD committee. And so we will have a public hearing, and second reading is scheduled for December ninth. So, thank you. Okay. Move on to committee reports. The first item in committee reports is the Fire Department's third quarter 2024 accreditation report. And this item is for informational purposes only. And you can find the report in our packet for your review. So is there any other report for Public Safety Committee? Our chair is not...
He's not talking.
Bob said no.
Is there any Community Development Committee report?
Not at this time, Madam.
Next is Parks and Public Works Committee, AB twenty-four dash one two four, land acquisition for reclaimed water system improvements. Councilor Benson, would you please read the introduction and motion?
This agenda bill seeks approval of a purchase and sale agreement to acquire land and easements needed for the reclaimed water distribution system improvements. The improvements will upgrade the aging reclaimed water distribution system and bring it into compliance with current state standards. Moved to approve the purchase and sale agreement with CF Arcus Thuppin LLC with a total contract value up to three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Benson, second by Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, tonight we have our project engineer, Andrew Vining, here to speak to this item.
Hi, good evening, council. This purchase and sale agreement comes after over a year of meetings with the property owner, the Soquonmi Ridge Golf Course. The agreement includes pricing for the property, which is located at the corner of Eagle Lake Drive and Ridge Street. The benefits of this location are that it's adjacent to the existing Class A system located along Ridge Street, as well as the transmission main under the BPA power easement. The area of the property is approximately one acre and... The area of the property is approximately one acre and the the property pricing is based on a evaluation provided to the city. And then there, in addition to the purchasing price, there is compensation for relocation of an irrigation main, which runs through the property, as well as access and construction easements for the project. Prior to the project, this area will be subdivided off from the golf course parcel, and this will occur such that construction can begin summer twenty twenty five and completion prior to July twenty twenty six. That I will take any questions.
And you handed this out, so can you explain what this is?
Yes, to follow up. I sent an email. I just provided a hard copy of the final agreement. We presented a draft agreement to Parks and Public Works Committee, and there were a few typos that were identified. This final agreement corrects those typos and also has been reviewed by the property owner.
Thank you, Mayor Tim Holloway.
Yeah, move to substitute the the purchase sale agreement that we have. Got the red line in the hand. Move to substitute this for what's in the agenda package.
Second.
Note, this, okay, thank you. Of note, this changes the property description and the seller's name, which are probably two important things you ought to get right.
It's been moved by Councilor, or Mayor Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Johnson to substitute the purchase and sale agreement updated draft. Any discussion on that? All in favor of substituting, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, we will use the updated draft. Council, do we have any questions regarding this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous for the land acquisition for reclaimed water system improvements. Thank you. Next item, under Finance Administration. First of all, is there any other additional things for Parks and Public Works? Any comments?
No.
Dates? Okay, thank you. Finance Administration Committee, AB twenty four dash one two one, River Trail Property Acquisition. Mayor Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Parcel identification number seven eight four nine two zero 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 two five, addressed at three nine oh seven six Southeast Parthway Streets, Snoqualmie, Washington nine eight zero six five, is identified as a Riverwalk acquisi- is identified on the Riverwalk Acquisition Statistic Exhibit Three as a remaining potential riverfront acquisition parcel. City continues to assemble properties to construct a formal, a formalized, non-motorized trail that follows the edge of the Snoqualmie River through the downtown historic business district. Property owner of the parcel, number already read it, would like to facilitate a voluntary purchase and sale agreement, Exhibit Two, to sell the property to the city. Move to adopt Resolution seventeen oh one, approving a purchase and sale agreement on parcel number already read it, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Wait a second, which parcel number was that?
Seven eight four nine two zero dash zero zero two five.
Two zeros?
Two zeros.
This has been moved by Mayor Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Christensen. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none. We have, tonight we have Community Development Director Emily Arretella here to speak to the item or to answer any questions regarding that. Council, do you have any questions? Mayor Tim Holloway?
This is a repetitive loss flood property also, right? Yeah, which is the main, main source of funding for this.
That is true. Councilor Vincent?
There was additional cost beyond the the funds. If you could just run through those additional costs real quick.
Sure, so the purchase and sale would be using funding from Flood Control District, King County, and CFT funds. We've traditionally used those two sources. But after the purchase and sale closes, then we would go into demolition costs, which, you know, we may be able to cover those costs with additional grant money as well.
Potentially.
Yeah, there's a strong likelihood, yeah.
Has something on that changed since Parks and Public Works, when we had, when we discussed this before, I don't recall you being so.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that has changed is that the Fire Department may be interested in using the property for a prolonged period of time. That could be the the placeholder between when the grant money is delivered, and so the property may not be vacant and suspect to squatters or, you know, some sort of vandalism.
And that's acceptable with the FEMA funds that we have to use to.
Correct, yes, it is. I did have to double check that, and I do apologize that the the requirement is that we have it in a conservation easement. So but the conservation 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 easement is placed immediately on the property at the time of recording or at the time of closing. And the demolition, I mean, it has to occur, but there's not a firm tie to the grant money and the demolition, so we have some flexibility.
Okay. Well, that's good news.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments? Are you going to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous, and it's approval of the River Trail Property Acquisition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Moving on to twenty twenty five legislative priorities. Mayor Tim Holloway, would you please lead this discussion?
So a couple of things. I do have updates from Public Safety and Community Development. I'll try to roll those into the conversations. I did want to, I guess, how far along are we in contacting the legislators?
Well, so two of them can meet virtually on December ninth at five thirty. So that's our next council meeting evening, so five thirty. There's there's meetings that are happening in Olympia for for all of legislatures, and so they would break away and meet with us probably for a half hour, maybe forty five minutes. The other three are available on December seventeenth and possibly at six P M. So they would also be virtual. Yeah, that's right.
So I, well, it didn't quite work out. Do we have to leave the building? I I guess I want to approach the subject that in a large even Zoom meeting, there may not be a free flow of information and spitballing of ideas. I kind of like to approach the mayor was taking with the tribe of herself and like two council members doing an engagement. Would the council be interested? It's going to take, it would take time of doing similar engagement with legislators that council and two, or mayor and two council members set up time, we probably still do Zoom just because of the logistics here, but do Zoom to have a more informal conversation about this. So again, so we can get that free flow of information between us and them. I mean, things may not come out when we're all under the spotlight in a big Zoom meeting.
Thoughts?
Huh?
I I would be supportive. Councilor Christensen?
I I'd be supportive of that. I think that, based on the feedback that I've had from the legislators, they do want to have a conversation about that type of thing. And I think that having a smaller group would probably facilitate that conversation better.
Do you have any volunteers?
Well, that's my next question is, is that six different legislators? Oh, sorry, two senators and two representatives or representative.
Well, now we have the
Well, and.
The redistricting.
I can't hear you. Councilor Washington, what were you saying?
So, yeah, we're just kind of walking through the math here. I think that is six, so two senators and four state representatives.
Correct.
So that's six. And seven with our King County representative. So seven, potentially.
Do the state representatives also, although the math is different from them, they're not under the same restriction, at least number wise, as to how many of them can show up at a meeting without it being a public meeting. Because their quorum is much larger than the three or four for us. Okay, so maybe we could break it up into two meeting, into three meetings. And again, do Zoom and have some prep work to discuss. Can we, in the next Public Safety, F and A, and Community Development? Let me think how we, how we would split those legislators up. I'll take any advice you can give me. Dean, if you will send me that list, I assume you have the list of, you have a list somewhere of the legislators we were trying to engage with?
Yes.
Yeah, if you'll send me that list so I can hold it in the spittle and try to break that up into like three groups. It's, again, this is going to be a time, additional time commitment instead of one meeting, it's going to be three meetings.
I think we have more flexibility than if we're not trying to set up seven, so six council members and myself. So again, we already have, you know, like one meeting for December ninth at five thirty, and we do have three that are available December seventeenth at six. So why can't we just have two meetings since we've already kind of honed in on the times?
Who's it have to? Who, again, you keep it down to a quorum on our side, it's got to be two council members and the mayor.
They can do three, that's still not quorum.
Do three.
Three. Well, send Kara, she's the smartest. Second.
You're the second smartest?
No, I second that notion.
So what we need is the list. So you were compiling the list?
Well, if you already have three who have agreed on the, was it the ninth?
I have two that disagreed on the ninth, three that's agreed on December seventeenth, and one we haven't heard from at this point.
Okay, so let's go with that split. Let's let's use those meetings if they've already agreed to them. I'm just now trying to figure on our side, it's yourself and three council members. Which three council members show up to those two meetings?
Well, you're going, right?
Well, yeah, I guess. It makes it easier because it's in the evening, it's not a take time off from work to go do it. So myself, Kara, anybody want to? I agree with you. Anybody else?
I can do the seventeenth after the.
The seventeenth?
Yeah, I can do the seventeenth as well.
I need somebody for the ninth.
I won't be here.
Could be able to.
Go for the ninth.
So that's three for the ninth.
I'm going to pick on you as your chair of the Community Development. For the, for the.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Yeah, I can do the seventeenth.
Okay, so there's your attendees for those two meetings.
So, on the ninth, Mayor Tim Holloway.
Myself.
Councilor Johnson, Councilor Christensen.
And Joe.
And the seventeenth is.
Myself, Kara, and Councilor Washington.
Oh, for the seventeen?
Which?
What home was Kat going to go to?
Yeah, but.
I mean, if, yeah. I'm the, I'm the newbie, I know.
I'm sorry, you don't look like council member a lot. Councilmember Cotton hasn't attended, so could she attend the seventeen?
If you want, I mean, I was.
With me, no. Because she had, she won't have, she's she's not attending on the ninth.
But that would give us four.
It would give us four.
Maybe give it to three.
Either myself or Kara would have to step out, so it's only three.
So she can attend. Otherwise, she she wouldn't be able to attend. Unless there's going to be a third meeting.
I I'm happy to step out.
Okay.
But you want the smart girl.
Yeah, we want the smart girl.
We'll we'll send you invites and everyone look at your calendars. But again, we need the list of legislative priorities, and so when when will that be coming?
Let me incorporate that in the feedback I've got. I do want to have one additional discussion with Councilor Washington.
Councilor Washington.
Washington, don't get my W's mixed up. I'll get those, I'll get those emails back out Friday. Let me incorporate those two things, I'll get them out Friday. I have power and network now, so I can do these.
There you go.
Life changes. It's the little things, right?
The little things of life.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Councilor Washington?
Point of follow up, Madam Mayor, you'll send out the the invites?
Yes.
Right, so we can just put them in our calendar, okay.
In point of order, there's no such thing as a point of follow up.
I'm sorry. Point of order. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. Councilor Johnson?
Point of order, that wasn't a point of order.
That wasn't a point of order?
Moving on to Mayor's Report. So we, I issued an emergency proclamation in response to the November nineteenth bomb cyclone, which allows the city to enter contracts for services, including helping with tree removal. And council will review and ratify this actually at the next December ninth council meeting. But just kind of overall overview of what's happened. So on Wednesday morning at five thirty A M., I looked out my window and here's this dedicated city team that was removing a fallen tree that had, that was across, across the street. That was in the middle of the street, and so they were there cutting it up. But they had started at four A M. and had worked to ensure that all the roads were clear. Now, many of them were here the night of the bomb cyclone, so this was, so that was Wednesday morning. There was quite a few that actually stayed overnight at Public Works and also at the Fire Department and here at City Hall, just to ensure that by the time, you know, they were able to get out when it was safe, that they, they went out and, you know, started removing trees or our interim city administrators spent the night and made sure that, went around and checked on everything. And, you know, also decided that we need to close City Hall because we didn't have electricity. So there was just a lot of different things that happened. I was really pleased with just the the leadership and the dedicated employees that were here that that helped and, you know, kept the, kept everyone safe. They have a big project ahead of them, still removing a lot of the limbs and branches and stuff, but but the roads are clear, and I think they did an outstanding job. So we did hire a tree removal company that also came in and helped cut up the trees and and take them away. So anyway, nice job to all our staff. Thank you. DA Carey is now finalized and our fees have been paid, so this has been the ongoing mitigation, so it is complete. And I'm going to give you an update. I mentioned during our council meeting last, last time that the history, there's several tri- properties have gone into reservation, including the Salish Lodge and also administration offices that they own. So they're now reservation, so they no longer pay taxes or property taxes based on that because of their reservation status. So we've continued to talk with them about, we continue to provide public safety, meaning police services and fire services at those locations. And we are, we had three meetings scheduled, two were canceled, and so we have one more meeting December fourth, so we're hoping that the conversations will happen regarding fee for service regarding the public and, or the police and fire services.
A quick question.
Mr. Joe?
Are they?
Johnson?
Councilmember Joe. Are they in reservation or are they in trust? Or is there a difference?
They went from trust, so the, to reservation.
So they are in reservation?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And with that, yes.
Well, they're entrusted to the federal government, they're part of the reservation. Trust reservation are somewhat synonymous. They can have.
They actually went into trust first and then they moved it to reservation.
Okay.
Two-step process.
But there are other property which may be, I'm going to invent names, forgive me, First Nation owned properties outside of trust, which can still go into the pill and come off the tax records, so. and come off the tax records, so.
Okay, is there any commission or community liaison reports? Okay. Moving on. Then next we have executive sessions. We have two executive sessions and so tonight we exist sessions pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation. With that, no action is anticipated following the executive session and the recording of the meeting will cease at that point, so we would not be coming back after the executive session. City council will take, we have a five-minute recess and we will have our city administrator Chambliss will be attending, finance director Boote, Captain Horacey and our interim city administrator, or excuse me, attorney, Kim Pratt. And then also online will be our interim city attorney, David Linehan. And then the second will be, including all those names, and community development director Artecha, but not Captain Horacey. So, and our new city attorney, Dana Burke. So with that, how long do you anticipate? Twenty minutes?
More?
More.
Is it a half hour?
Thirty minutes. Thirty minutes for both. So we will be back. Let's take a five-minute break and we will complete by 9:30. So, and we will get David Linehan on Zoom, so. Thank you.